It is 12:01, so let's go ahead and get started. Thank you, everybody, for being here, and thank you to our friends at KPU and Catch Can Daily News. And I don't know if KRBD is here. Ah, he is in the back. Thank you, guys, for covering the forum hosted by the Greater Catch Can Chamber of Commerce for our 2024 Municipal Borough Assembly and School Board Candidates. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Trevor Shaw. I have the pleasure of serving as the President of the Greater Catch Can Chamber of Commerce. So to kick things off, if you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. And just to talk about the format a little bit, everybody will get opening statements. I have some questions that are for all of the candidates, and then some questions that are specific to Assembly and School Board Candidates. And the time to answer each question will vary. And if we have time at the end, we'll do closing statements as well. We have two candidates who weren't able to be here due to prior scheduling conflicts. And so after each of the candidates who are present for each respective office complete their opening statements, I will read an opening statement from the Assembly and the School Board Candidate who are not here. Before we get started, I would like us all to, in the aftermath of the disaster impacting our community, I would like everyone to please stand again and observe a moment of silence for Sean Griffin. Thank you, everybody. And I appreciate everybody being here. Appreciate all the hard work of our first responders, our Public Works crews, the Catch Can EOC, Emergency Operations Center, for everything they're doing. Would like to recognize one person in the room who has been working very, very hard, day in and day out, down at the EOC, and that's our City Manager, Delilah Walsh. We've gotten to spend a lot of time together over the last week, and so let's just give a round of applause to Delilah and her staff. And please don't forget the folks working in the City Public Works Department. They lost a dear friend and a colleague and immediately had to get right back to work, not just normal chefs, but quadruple time to keep our community safe, get things back open. And so a big thank you to City Public Works, the Fire Departments, and the Police Department, and all of our other partners and different agencies that have been responding. So let's go ahead and get started. We will go in order, do Borough Assembly and then School Board Candidates. And so I have the microphone right here, and we will do one-minute opening statements, starting with Jamie Palmer for Borough Assembly.
Thank you, Trevor. And thank you to the Greater Catch Can Chamber of Commerce for facilitating this forum for all of us. I wish more people were here, but as Michelle O'Brien so eloquently stated, it's sunny, and Catch Can folks like to be out when it's sunny. So like Trevor said, my name is Jamie Palmer, and I am running for reelection because the first round, it's just really difficult. You're drinking from a fire hose and trying to put all the puzzle pieces together and figure out who to go to for what and just going through the motions. And my first couple of meetings, I was terrified. I didn't think I would be, but sitting at that table was very different than managing my businesses or any of that kind of stuff. But now it's like second nature. The borough staff is fantastic to work with. It's wonderful to put together the puzzle pieces for future community development, and that's what it's all about. So everything that we do at that table is for the future of Catch Can and our citizens. I myself have two young children, an eight-year-old and a five-year-old, both who started school today at Hatling, which was really sweet. And so when I talk about the future of Catch Can and why I'm here, and it's true, it's because my kids are going to be here, and I'm hoping to create an island that they want to stay and live here, too. So thank you for your confidence in me, and I hope that you reelect me for Borough Assembly.
And just, I didn't state this, but yeah, if you can please say your name and the office that you're running for.
Hi, I'm Bridgette Mattson. I'm running for a seat on the Borough Assembly. Like Jamie, I also have children that I've raised here. I have five. They're all K-High graduates as of May. I look forward to being a potential part of making this a community where they can return with their families. Right now, that's a huge concern for us and for our kids. This is not a community where they feel like they can see a future for themselves economically, and I think it's really important that our governments work to develop environments where people can thrive economically, socially, and as a community. We've seen a lot of community togetherness over the last week, week and a half. It's amazing how Catch Can comes together when it really matters, and it's really important that we address the issues that are before us, whether it's tourism, affordable housing, substance abuse, how we support our youth and families so that this is a community where we can all thrive. I hope to have a seat at the Borough Assembly so that I can be part of those decision-making opportunities for our future.
Thank you. And before we move into our School Board Candidates, I will read a written opening statement submitted by Janalee Gage, who is running for Borough Assembly as well. And all of these written opening statements are read verbatim and without any editing by the chamber. Good evening. My name is Janalee Frost Hunt Snarotamo Talbot Church Minich Gage, sixth generation, born and raised in Catch Can. First, I wish I could be here today in person, but I attended my niece's wedding in Oregon and am currently in Seattle having my prosthetic leg adjustments made and attending the 2024 Empower Fest for amputees hosted by the Hangar Clinic. I am running for the Catch Can Borough Assembly because of several issues that have come up recently and those I see as critical issues in the foreseeable future. One of these vital concerns is the continued work needed to ensure equal disability access to and from the airport and other public facilities. We all know that one of those public facilities that will be receiving an expansion and remodel is the Recreation Center. I believe having an individual at the dais who clearly understands what the Americans with Disabilities Act stands for is essential in creating a facility that is genuinely accessible to everyone in our community. It's essential to understand that just having accessible door, front doors and bathrooms doesn't make a facility accessible. If elected, I plan to work on comprehensive solutions beyond those minimum requirements, ensuring that all public facilities are accessible to everyone. The city and borough are grappling with grave issue of counterfeit art, a menace that not only disrespects our community and local native and non-native artists, but also poses a significant threat to our economy. Our local art industry, our second-largest economic driver, is a $14 million industry in southeast Alaska alone. Allowing cheap knockoffs to undercut authentic art pieces undermines our economy. It tarnishes our reputation as a trustworthy hub for genuine art and gemstones. This is not only, this is not just a matter of art. It's a financial concern that impacts us all, particularly our local artists and business owners who tirelessly hone their skills to create beautiful, authentic art and work honestly to make a living in our community. This summer has also made it very clear to me and other community members that we also need to have hard conversations regarding how many ships and visitors our community can handle before we become unwelcoming to visitors and damage our community's quality of life. This past summer has all made us conclude that this conversation needs to happen, and I am not afraid to have these conversations. I've only touched on a few issues that I am passionate about. If elected, I promise to work hard for our community respectfully, Janalee. And we can go ahead and move into our School Board Candidates.
Well, hello, everyone. My name's Michelle O'Brien. I'm running for the one-year seat on the School Board. Ironically, I was sitting here in 2009. My family had just moved here from Tallahassee, Florida, brand-new in the community, and I was rather shocked that no one had signed up to run for the School Board. And I'm not quite sure what I was thinking at the time, but I signed up as a write-in candidate and, much to my surprise, won. And it was a pleasure serving on the School Board for many years and also as its president. So why the one-year term? Not only because I still remain passionate about our schools, and even though my daughters have both graduated and moved on in their lives, I've continued to be involved by getting a $13,000 CTE grant for the high school, as well as, most recently, obtaining a grant for our school system and the middle schools to have a national civic speed. I feel like I'm a good fit for this one-year position because, having been through this as a new person, and even new to the community for that matter, it's really hard, as a new person, to grasp everything effectively and efficiently right out of the gate. It really takes a full year to do it. So I feel like with my experience, and certainly there have been many changes and certainly different challenges that face this school district now, but I think with my experience, it'll be an easy fit for me. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Hillary Reipenberg, and I'm filing for the School Board seat. I am very passionate about the School Board and everything that they have been doing. A lot of things that have encouraged me to run are talking about the budgets and then the communication. I feel like, as a parent to a 13, nine, and three-year-old, my family, my household, has been affected by some of these decisions made by the previous board, and I would really like to be somebody who could be a resource to other younger parents who aren't quite sure what's going on. I know there's a lot to learn about the School Board, but I would love the opportunity to be a part of the change and be successful with the next board.
Hello, everybody. My name, my English name is Keenan Sanderson. I'm running for one of the three-year School Board seats. My Hodkiller Haida name is Hunch Ingud Kongai Haas, which roughly translates to the bright moon over the ocean. If you know anything about me, it kind of makes a little bit of sense to have that name because pretty much most of my personality is related to the ocean. I am running for another three-year term on the School Board, and I'll have to agree with the other speakers so far. With this being my first term, you know, the first year to year and a half is, you know, really learning about what goes on throughout the entire year, being in an elected position. And then it isn't really until your last year that you can really, like, be your full, effective self. And I personally believe for myself that one year wasn't enough to make real change within this district, at least from my perspective. And I'm hoping to garner another three-year term to be able to serve my community. And I imagine this question might be asked later, but we always get asked, you know, what makes you stand out compared to other candidates? And I firmly believe that we have a really good set of candidates here for School Board. But, and I can't, I can't use this excuse forever, but I, for the past three years, and based off of who is currently on this ballot this October, I am going to be the youngest, potentially the youngest School Board member of any sitting or potentially newly-elected candidate. So, and ultimately, the district, we do serve our community, we do serve parents, but ultimately, we need to be keeping our number-one constituent in mind, who don't, most of them don't have a vote, which is our children. And I feel as, you know, being a young, relatively young person myself, I can connect and understand them best compared to anybody else. So with that, I would appreciate your vote in October. Thank you.
Hello there. My name is Jordan Tab, and I'm running for a seat on the Catch Can Gateway Borough School District Board. I served on the board previously in 2019 to 2022, and I really valued that experience, working as part of a board that has a great diversity of perspectives and opinions and backgrounds. We worked through the challenge of COVID together as a board, and I appreciated working with a crew of staff and faculty in school, experts from our community and from the state, to, to, to help support a deliberative, careful process where we attempted to do the best with the situation. And now we're moving, you know, continued into the challenge of the budget. And I appreciate the collaboration that the district has received from the Borough Assembly to this point. I feel that we've gotten about all that we can from the local sources of funding. And so if I am elected to the School Board, I see one of my primary jobs will be advocacy, gaining support and developing understanding of the importance of a sustainable budget for education, for staff, faculty, and programs that serve the whole student, families, and communities. Because there are two populations that I'm especially concerned about. The first is our students and making sure that they're getting all the resources that they need to be successful. And the second is our staff and faculty, as mentioned by prior candidates. Catch Can doesn't necessarily look like an economically prosperous place and maybe not a place that employees or quality candidates would want to come and serve our community. So when we can develop a more sustainable budget for the services that we know our students need, then we'll be able to attract and retain the best-quality candidates for what I think is the best-quality community that is Catch Can.
Thank you. And I will read a written statement by Ally Genter, who is running for a three-year seat on the School Board and couldn't be here. Hello, everyone. My name is Ally Genter. I'm a proud clinket mother, mother of four children, living here in southeast Alaska. I want to start by expressing my disappointment and sincere apologies for not being able to attend this event in person. My family and I had a quick trip planned to Wrangle to visit our family, which was arranged before the forum was scheduled. Running for the School Board because I believe in the power of education to shape the future of our children and our community. As a long-term resident of Catch Can, I've seen both the strengths and challenges our schools face. As a parent, I've experienced firsthand the importance of strong and diverse educational environment. I've witnessed the positive impact that dedicated teachers and well-rounded programs have on our students, and I've also seen where improvements are needed. One of the top priorities is ensuring we continue to maintain our vital preschool programs, including the Indian Education Preschool. These programs are essential for providing our youngest learners with a strong foundation and for preserving our cultural heritage. I want to ensure these resources remain available and accessible to all families in our community. Fully aware of our budget crisis that our district is facing, and I understand there may not be a solution that satisfies everyone. However, if elected, I am committed to providing transparency and open communication throughout this challenging process. This past year, many parents, teachers, and community members felt blindsided by the decisions that were made. My goal is to ensure this does not happen again. I want to keep everyone informed and involved so we can work together to navigate through these tough times. In addition, I'm deeply concerned about the recent loss of several key elective programs. These opportunities help broaden our children's horizons and prepare them for life beyond the classroom. I want to ensure that we're not just maintaining the basics, but also nurturing the passions and skills that make our students well-rounded individuals. Closing, I'm running for the School Board because I care deeply about our children's educations and the future of our community. I'm ready to listen, learn, and work collaboratively to ensure that our schools are places where everyone can thrive. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to the opportunity to serve. All right. Everybody did a good job staying on time. Just be warned that if you run up against the clock, I will tell you it's time to stop talking. So we will jump into my favorite question first that I always like to ask, and we'll have everybody answer this, and we'll just work back down the table. Would you support a new effort to consolidate the Catch Can Gateway Borough and the city of Catch Can into a single unified municipality? Please elaborate on your thought process behind your answer, and we'll start with Jordan. And we'll move the microphone back down. Sorry.
I don't have a firm commitment as to whether or not that's in the best interest of the community. I do think having a more uniformed tax basis, as I think about it versus a small-business owner and thinking about the challenges of funding all of our borough and city services when some borough residents are not paying for city services and have the challenge of that. I was just speaking with the folks from Mobile Integrated Health and how that's a city-funded program that isn't currently accessible to out-of-city borough residents. So I think in, at least in principle, I would like to have uniformed services and uniformed tax-based requirements for the larger borough, but I'm just one voice in it, so I'm not sure. Thanks.
I, I would also have to agree that I'm not necessarily the best person to ask this question because I am not an economist. I don't, you know, I don't, I don't fully understand a lot of the different governance aspects outside of, when it comes to education-related stuff through the school district and School Board. I, as, in terms of, like, in, providing services for the community, I, I, in one way, I do appreciate having consolidation and uniformativity with being able to provide different services for our people. However, my one counterargument to that is that I, based off of what I've seen through the various different tribal governments that I am affiliated with, a lot of people actually really appreciate the diversity.
That is time.
Anyways, diversity is good. Thank you.
I'm gonna say, have to say that I agree with Keenan and Jordan about it. Coming from somebody who lives outside of the borough, just having the different resources, it makes for a different lifestyle, so it would have to be a larger conversation, I feel. But, yeah.
That's not something for me to decide. In fact, that's for the entire community to decide. And if memory serves me correctly, they've already been posed that question on multiple occasions and decided against that. In lieu of having any sort of consolidation, what has been heartening is to see how our borough and city and Saksman, as well as our other governmental entities, have come together, last week being one of them, to make the community a better place. Over the years, I've seen a much larger sense of cooperation between the entities, and I find that very heartening.
Thank you. I would agree with Michelle in the collaboration aspect. I think it's really important, as we live on one island, to have greater collaboration. As I looked through the Catch Can tourism strategy that was a collaboration of the city and the city of Saksman and the Catch Can Visitors Bureau and the KGB and other partners to develop a comprehensive plan for how we best engage with our tourism industry, I do see some incredible merits to working together. I agree also that it is a community decision to determine the consolidation. I personally am a fan of looking more into consolidation. I think we have a lot of government for such a small island. We have two completely separate management teams for both the borough and the city, and it's a lot of salary, it's a lot of overlap. It's, it's a lot of money that we are spending from our taxes to support two completely separate government agencies that employ a lot, a lot of people for such a small community. So I am personally in favor of consolidation, but do support the will of the people.
Thank you. Sometimes it's great to go last because you can just say, I agree with everybody. But also, it would go to the tax or to the voters to decide. It would be a valid initiative for sure. But I, I do echo everyone else that's sitting up here. It's a, not right now. I think we have had really great coordination and cooperation across the governmental bodies. Another great example recently was with the Alaska Housing Finance Corporation and a project that's going into Saksman that the borough was able to help the city of Saksman to facilitate that build. And if we were all pulled together, we may not have access to these types of dollars and being able to collaboratively work across our powers and to seek outside funding for the island. So I don't think so right now. I think each individual municipality or governmental body has work to do to clean up our own internal houses. And so maybe down the line, but not at this time.
Okay, Jamie, you can keep the mic. Another question for all of you. In Alaska, municipalities must provide a minimum amount of funding to their school districts, which is known as the required local contribution. But there is also a maximum local contribution that can be provided, which caps total local funding that can be made available to every municipal school district. With limited resources due to a variety of factors, along with the cap on which the amount can be contributed by the borough to the district, what do you believe are some creative and innovative solutions the district or borough could implement to preserve and stretch resources currently available?
Thank you for that question. It's been a very hot topic, as always, the school district funding, and it's the largest piece of funding that the Borough Assembly has to work on each year. And, and it has been a really tough time since I've been on the Borough Assembly. It's been the three years of a lot of back and forth, a lot of, a lot of issues with the way that we receive the budget and what it looks like and what it doesn't look like, and how we need to know what is spending to date. We don't get that. That would be great to know, just like if you're running a business. If you're 50% spent in November for your total budget, that's a problem. You're not going to make it around to the, to the next cycle. I actually have quite a bit to say on this topic. And as enrollment's been going down, we've seen actually an increase in the funding here. And so when people talk about the base student allocation has been flat, okay, that has, but there have been other things that have gone up significantly while the student counts have gone down. So some of this just doesn't make sense in the way that the budget is coming together. And I think that we really need to scrutinize that and make sure that everything that's happening in those schools is for the children and taking care of them and what we're, what we're prioritizing. I also think for creative aspect, which was the question, at the Borough Assembly, I asked about, why don't we have a booster club? You know, to take care of all of the special activities and funding the kids' travel, everything like that. Let's get this outside flow of cash coming. If the tourism industry wants to help, we've seen that through the dock booth that the city put out on the ports that kids can go out there and raise lots of money based off the tourists wanting to come by and throw some money at them. Like, let's open the floodgates because these folks want to know how to help. They've also shown that during the landslide that they are bringing money in. So that's one creative way.
Thanks. And I am giving everybody two minutes for this question, just so you're not, like, thinking it's going to be over instantly.
Thank you, Trevor. I served on the School Board for four years. I am pretty familiar with their budget and their budgeting process. I think that one of the keys that should be considered, which Jamie talked about, is that flow of information. It's really important that the Borough Assembly has the information that they need in a timely manner so that they can feel informed in the decision-making that they are involved in. One of the biggest, it's about a third of the incoming income and revenue that the, that the borough does receive is related to school funds, whether it's property taxes or school bond debt, sales tax. Some of that revenue is specifically devoted to school funding. It's one of the key functions of the, of the borough is to fund the schools. It's really important, though, that they feel like they can make an educated decision on the budget. And it gets very difficult, as I watched specifically this year, that it came down to deadlines, which created a lot of drama, a lot of dissatisfaction, both with the school staff and then also in the greater borough and in our communities because of that pushing up to the deadline. Some of that is because the schools are waiting for a base, base student allocation to be raised and have been waiting for almost eight years now, and there, that has not happened from this date, and they hope for it every year. But, but we could do a better job of having a better flow of information earlier so that we can make better decisions and communicate those out better to our community. I echo Jamie. One of my solutions is how we fund activities. Juno has taken some creative approaches. Our community certainly can, and our, and our borough could support that in finding ways to, to support and fund activities in, in different ways than through that budget process, which would allow for some breathing room in our budget. And I think that that would be a good, a good start to that creativity. Some of that really is, is using that, that borough, school district liaison committee to develop different solutions.
In, in some ways, I do agree with the previous comments, but the one thing that I would say is we're not going to be able to have any creative strategies without having, first, having full transparency. And in talking with members of the community, that doesn't seem to be necessarily the case. However, the caveat being that there were some extreme challenges this year. So we've got increased expenses, whether it be through salaries, it could be through just increased inflationary expenses. So those are up. We still want to maintain a low tax base, right? We don't want an increase of taxes. And then we have insurance gaps that we have to deal with. I'm looking forward personally to the possibility of presenting the borough with a budget much, much earlier so that not only can the community contemplate what's before them, but also the borough has ample time to do that. It's also important to think that when you, you may present an earlier budget, it all still hinges on that base allocation for the student. And, and you're absolutely right, that hasn't changed in years. And it's really, it really is a travesty. So increase transparency, and then we can talk about creative strategies. The last thing I'll say is that I do believe we already do have a booster club in this town, and it is the entire business community who are called upon time and time again who generously give to our sports programs and our activities. They're immensely expensive in Alaska, so maybe, maybe there's a little bit of a different kind of look to that, maybe something more official. But already, the community is contributing hundreds of thousands of dollars to our activities program.
I wholeheartedly agree with. I wholeheartedly agree with Michelle. Um, and I think a lot of my opinion on this topic is just being able to support getting the resources of the audit done in a timely manner, being able to really have a good relationship in delivering the, the budgets and stuff with the borough, so we can, so we can all kind of just, you know, agree to disagree or just, you know, come up with something. Um, but that's what I have on it.
So as, um, the only s- sitting, uh, current school board member, I really actually like this question because it's something that we have been talking about for a very long time, even before this current year. There's a lot of issues, uh, concerning, uh, transparency within our budget in the, in the school district. And from my perspective, at least since I've been on the board, um, you know, I, I see, I see different things being in the position that I am because I do have access to materials fairly, you know, quickly compared to the general public. That being said, the school board, um, at our past couple of meetings have been discussing about how the, you know, this next board is going to potentially tackle this budget issue. And we've, we've already talked about, you know, uh, creating a plan, uh, to intrigue, i- i- increase our transparency and starting early within the bu- starting earlier within the budget cycle, uh, to talk about, like, what things need to be funded and what not funded. There's issues related to that because we don't know what's gonna happen with the state. We don't know what's gonna happen with the borough, and we don't know what's gonna happen with our student count, as it's been previously described, that it, our enrollment is continuously going down. One other thing that I'll mention too, uh, that I have, uh, I, I'm curious to pursue, but a little bit cautious to actually implement, is one of the things that, uh, has been discussed with us, um, uh, board members, uh, from, uh, the public, is providing various options, uh, earlier on within the budget cycle to show our community, the state, and the Borough Assembly, what, what do we think that we need to fully fund our district? And what is, uh, I can't remember what the president said or what he called it, but basically a bare bones budget. And, uh-
That's time.
Okay. Talk to me more about that after.
Absolutely. Uh, unfortunately, I think, in my experience on previous boards, the, uh, budget process is a seasonal activity where the, the borough and board assemblies, um, come together through a liaison committee to review. Um, I think it's appropriate to look at that going forward as a year-round activity and to increase the engagement, um, in that process, even if that was a, another meeting at the border, that, that is, that liaison group to be reviewing that process, um, throughout the year and be able to be looking at. This is the budget as we understand it for upcoming fiscal years. Um, and this is the strategies, um, that the borough and that the school board want to take to try to address that, um, whether that, um, includes advocacy at the state level, working with the legislature, um, seeking grant funding. I, I do want to echo, uh, previous comments that there, there are booster clubs and sorts of supports for activities. My concern, though, is that sometimes those activities don't reach the kids on the margins. Um, we have kids who, uh, maybe are underhoused or struggle to access school at all. Um, and so I want to applaud the district, which is wrapping up a multimillion-dollar grant from SAMSSA to provide, uh, in-school social work and other services, including homeless services. I don't know what the plan is to sustain that funding. I believe the intent was to roll that grant funding into, um, Medicaid reimbursement services. So we need to be able to sustain services that address all of our students, not just the students who are engaged in extracurriculars, um, but to help kids, uh, not just, uh, avoid dropping out of high school, but dropping out or disconnecting from services in middle school, which is really the, the risk area that we see.
And you can keep the microphone. We're gonna do some, uh, school board specific question, and then we'll just work down the line to an assembly one as well. Uh, for the school board candidates, organizations on all ends of the ideological spectrum, from the Center of American Progress to the Heritage Foundation, have identified growing apathy and diminishing civic engagement to be a major challenge in modern education. What are some ideas you have on how we tackle this important issue and how we work proactively to change the way we teach civics and engage our students to be positively involved? In one minute.
I, I really appreciate that question because I remember, um, I was not a terribly connected high schooler. I had other things on my mind, but the class I really felt the most engaged in was my, my high school American government class. And what I remember about that space was, that above all, the, the teachers I can recall working with, the teacher who made a space for us to be forming and sharing our opinions, um, and to be talking and thinking out loud about what was happening in our community and our country. So, yes, there, there is a, a national challenge, it's like this community, of getting people to show up, um, to, to be part of the civic process, um, whether that's cynicism or just, uh, you not being able to get back out of the house after, you know, multiple years of pandemic. Um, I think what I found, and this may seem simple, are really making a space and providing free food, right? Like, getting people to a place. Our parents often don't feel welcome in our schools, so as a school board candidate, I'd say like, hey, we need to make a space where they feel welcome, and feeding them is the best way to do that.
One of the things that I tend to get fired up around this time of year, uh, is not necessarily the elections themselves, but the- Outcome of the elections. And it's primarily because of the voter turnout, turnout that Ketchikan and all of Alaska tends to see, at least that I can recall in the past, like, six, seven years, they've actually been paying attention to, you know, local and state and national politics. And to see, to see like sixteen, sixteen to twenty percent voter turnout rates in some of these precincts is really disheartening. Um, and, you know, the only thing that I can maybe say about this is that, you know, politics, especially nowadays, are becoming way more and more polarizing. And to a young person, it is very scary to get into because of potential backlash that you might see from your friends or not your friends, or various community members. Um, so to wrap up my very short minute here, just trying to find new, more, better ways to make it more of a welcoming place because, uh, ultimately, these kids are gonna be stepping into our shoes one day, and something needs to change with that.
I think coming from a cultural background, um, especially being a part of the tribe for many years, a lot of things that I have noticed from non-native children is that they do enjoy engaging with things that are cultural, and they enjoy learning new things in that aspect. So I think that maybe adding a little bit of the cultural to some of the events might be really helpful. Um, but as far as being a parent and that outward view is, I've always wanted somebody kind of like myself who would be very vocal in like, hey, like, you should stop by here, you should, you know, bring your kids. Um, but just being that person to put yourself out there to encourage, um, our community to engage. You know, it's really important, and I know it's not cool to some people, but having somebody to be vocal and not scared is, you know, something that had encouraged me a long time ago.
Well, I, I don't think that this is something that is an umbrella program of the district. It's a multi-pronged approach. Um, civics is not just politics. It's about being involved in the community. And when I say multi-pronged, and I'm gonna be very short here, that is exactly why I went, um, for that grant from the U.S. Chamber of Commerce for the National Civics Be. That can involve an unlimited amount of sixth through eighth graders in our schools. And by having that event here locally, that'll allow some of our children to then go to the state level. And ultimately, if they perform well, go to the national level with the possibility of earning a $50,000 scholarship. So it's ideas from people like me, like you, and everyone around our community that are gonna help increase that engagement.
Thank you. And a Borough Assembly specific question. With this at the, with a recent disaster at the forefront of everyone's minds, uh, it's important to note that our emergency managers for each municipality are, uh, filling two positions. They, their day jobs are, uh, full-time fire chiefs, either for, in this case, the South Tangis Fire Department or the City Fire Department. Would you support funding a full-time emergency manager position in the borough?
That's a really great question, coming off of this last week. Uh, I think when we make those kind of decisions, it can't be off of just one week. Um, when we, uh, look at what's been done, we recognize how many people are supporting, making sure that the day-to-day operations are being maintained while the emergency response has been pretty incredible across the board. Um, I don't know that I would support that currently. I don't know that we have done enough to determine if there's a, a, a need. Um, right now, we've worked off of, uh, uh, the EOC. That's a collaboration. We've found that, that has worked for our community. I know that during COVID, um, Abner Hoag was the chief of police, and he ended up spending most, if not full-time, just devoted to a COVID response. Um, that was long-term and sustained. Um, right now, I think that we're a pretty small island. As we look at budget cuts, as we look at budget needs, we'd have to be, um, be more mindful about what we're gonna prioritize and what we truly need to fund to create a full-time, uh, specific position.
Yeah, that's a tough one. I think, um, I, I wouldn't be able to weigh in on it without asking Chief Riden and, and Rick Hines from the city, what are their thoughts? Is it necessary? Um, is it something that is a all-the-time kind of position? Or is it one that when a disaster happens, one of them steps up and their assistant then takes over? I, I don't know. Um, but I'm a really big fan of the phrase, nothing, um, about us without us, you know? And they are the ones that would know and would be able to inform the assembly on a topic like that.
And, and just a little bit of follow-up information on that. I know that conversation has come up at our local emergency planning committee meetings and just some conversations in the community. So just wanted to ask and encourage you to, uh, tell your colleagues on the assembly to have that conversation. And when our school board, I mean, our city council candidates show up, um, I'm sure they will get the same question. Since you have the microphone, Jamie, let's do another borough-specific question. As soon as I find it. Ah. The availability and affordability of housing is a major issue in our community. Proposals regarding rent control and limitations of short-term rentals have previously been mentioned, among other potential solutions that could be implemented across the board to, uh, hopefully alleviate the housing problem. However, those solutions would increase the cost and burden of new development that is already in a stagnant and difficult environment for residential, new residential construction. What ideas are you hoping to bring as an assembly member to foster and encourage new development? We'll give that two minutes.
I love your very long questions. I have to follow along. It's like, okay.
What, 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 what can, what can we do to encourage?
I got it. I got it. Yeah, I got it. Um, I think over the, the last three years and post-COVID, the assembly has certainly done a lot on the housing front. If you go to the, the borough website right now, there's a really beautiful grid outlining all of the work that's been happening as far as increasing density, allowing for people to, um, to add, uh, attached dwelling units onto their homes. There's all kinds of things like that that have been happening. They're just not, maybe we need to do a better job of sharing some of that information and not just putting it on the website. You know, we could blast it a little out or highlight that. But, um, a couple of things that are opportunities. Um, Gravina, who's over there and just has lots of flat land, let's, let's consider it. But I, I would love to make sure we have access to Gravina and allow more opportunities for building over there. Uh, I know there's a lot of locals who never want it to look like Douglas, and I'm probably one of those. Like, I, I like looking over at trees, you know, and seeing that, but the airport reserve covers a huge portion of that, so that would maintain that, um, frontage anyway. It may be the pieces that are tucked behind Pinnock, where there is active building going on, and there are folks that are building townhomes, and lovely things are coming. Um, it's just that a lot of private developers aren't gonna toot their horns or share it. They're busy working on projects and, and taking care of housing people. And, um, I think that there are really fabulous things going on. And I, I actually have the document here. I could, here it is. This is the one you wanna go see. This is all housing information. It's pages and pages of wonderful initiatives that are coming. Uh, one of those I mentioned earlier was the AHFC Last Frontier Initiative in the city of Saksman, that was that collaborative, um, opportunity that was between Saksman, Borough. I believe the city was a part of that lobbying initiative too initially.
Time.
Okay, fine. Right as we get going.
And I even gave you two minutes.
This is one of, I think, the more important topics to a lot of members of our community. Um, as we look at people that are trying to move in, it's difficult for employers to bring people in. It's difficult to attract staff. It's difficult to retain staff. Um, it's difficult for, you know, the Coast Guard has brought this up multiple times, that they, you know, have expanded their services here and aren't able to house their families. Uh, that impacts our school enrollment. It impacts our tax rolls. It impacts our economy. I mean, it impacts their, their life here, um, and their experience here in Ketchikan. Um, this is such an important, important topic, and I think that the borough has been very mindful. The planning commission has worked. They've worked to identify lots, to develop, um, the process to, to bring land to the public, um, to, to look at all these different opportunities to partner. I know, um, that the Alaska Housing Finance has worked to how can we, how can we invest here in Ketchikan, uh, in the ways that we have, uh, available to us. A lot of those things we won't see for a couple of years. We won't see the impact of those, uh, projects for a couple of years. So we're still feeling the hurt now. And the reality is, is that short-term rentals do impact, uh, the availability of, of housing units on our island. Um, we're not currently regulating those at the level that we could. Um, we, we could make some, uh, determinations that aren't going to have potential halts to new development. We could be creative with how we're taxing and how we're regulating so that we're not de-incentivizing new development because we're regulating some of the things that are going on right now. And I think that it's important that we recognize that this is a, a, a problem that takes a lot of solutions, um, not one. Um, we didn't get here because of one major thing, um, but Ketchikan needs to really focus on addressing this problem from a lot of different aspects in order to, to develop the solutions to house people, so that this is a great place to live.
That was exactly two minutes. I was about to cut you off. Doing good. All right, we'll move into school board question, and then we'll have a question for all of you. And then we're, I think we may be out of time at that point. So, um, just a generic question, since Jamie tells me my introductions are too long, trying to frame these questions for you. But do you think the school district is placing enough emphasis on career and technical education? Or should there be more work done on that front? We'll start with Michelle.
Well, this is something I'm really passionate about, huh, um, very passionate about. Uh, I also am the executive officer for the Southern Southeast Alaska Building Industry Association. And this is, is so crucial to the development of our youth. Not every child is going to go to college. Not every child wants to go to college. And I think more and more kids, and parents for that matter, are waking up and realizing that it may not be such a great idea to head off to a four-year or a two-year university and stack hundreds of thousands of dollars in student loans before they even start making a dime. Whereas most, most kids who tru- who choose to enter the trades have a number of great scholarships available, apprenticeships available, and right out of the gate, they're earning a very good living wage. I will tell you, one of the problems with housing and development in this community is a lack of tradespeople. My people are crying for employees. They're crying for young people to join the trades. So yes, I think there could be more of an emphasis to the kids, to offer them better options that might be outside of the traditional four-year degree.
That was really well said. Um, I think that we definitely could use more vocational training for our community, and then how can we sustain those jobs and bring, if we have to outsource the training, how can we bring those back and have a program that makes sure that they follow up, that we have opportunities to come back home to Ketchikan?
How much time we got for this in two minutes?
I gave Michelle ninety seconds.
Okay. Uh, so, uh, I'm gonna give you the short answer and then I'll give you the winded answer. Uh, I, I do believe that this, the district is putting a ton of emphasis, uh, within our career and technical programs. However, I will agree that there always can be improvements. Uh, I have had the honor of being able to help out with this, uh, uh, school board strategic plan this past year. And one of the big emphasis points that we put on is career and technical education. Um, some of the things that we are, have done in some areas and are continuing to work on to develop, uh, is, uh, developing curriculum for career and technical education that isn't directly career and technical education, meaning that, you know, we are developing math classes, English classes, social studies classes, and all these other different classes that students can take, that they're still getting the, the necessary things that they need for their core curriculum, but they're also advancing their career and technical education to potentially go on past high school to get into the trades. Um, another thing that, uh, we're doing, um, and it's still very early on, and I'm really proud to be a part of this, is we are developing specific career pathways within career and technical education, um, i.e. like, you know, there's a welding path. There is a, uh- I E like, you know, there's a welding path, there is a uh mechanic path, there is a a woodshop path and all these other things. One of the things that I think needs absolute improvement immediately and it's gonna take some creative thinking to uh get this back up and running, but I was a maritime kid when I was in high school. I took both years of maritime and right now the maritime program is struggling because the Jackpotant um it needs a lot of repairs.
Time.
Maritime's important, CTE's important.
Absolutely. Um we have, we have some amazing offerings in our our secondary school programs and I I wanna advocate for increasing, you know, the perspective of of vocational and CTE exploratory work, really in primary schools. On the perspective I bring to it, I work with a lot of kids kindergarten through fourth and fifth grade, often they they're referred to me because they're struggling in school. And one of the things when you ask the kid why they're struggling in school is they struggle to learn in the way that school is set up for them at that time. That maybe they have a diagnosis of ADHD and they struggle to sit at a desk and and do things by rote or they struggle the way that they're being instructed. Um so I wanna be cautious about unfunded mandates here or initiatives, but uh because I wanna respect that uh many of our teachers, um they're dealing with a requirement, the lesson plan and meet objectives hour by hour. And we say, hey, let's add some new CTE type work to your work, it's like where and how. But when we s- when we expose kids to the many different ways of learning and the many different ways of work as early as possible, sometimes that's what helps a kid feel connected and confident and capable in school. I've had some kids say, yeah, I, school is school, but what I really wanna do is I wanna work with, I wanna learn how to make stuff. And if we give them that opportunity earlier, I think that will help us address our increasing at-risk population in the secondary school environment where they feel like they've missed their chance.
That was exactly ninety seconds, so you're, you guys are doing good, all right. Uh one question for everybody and then um I just note, Michelle does have a meeting she has to run to at one. My Borough Assembly candidates cannot escape without me asking this last question that will get to them, which I'm sure they will love, and so just be prepped for that. So this question is for everybody. Generally, do you think the current rate of taxes levied by the Borough is too high, too low, or just right? Are there any changes to taxation locally that you would like to see?
I I think every successful politician starts out by saying, I'd like to raise taxes, right? I I do think, um you know, we've recently made raises to the to the city sales taxes, um at least in the the seasonal um uh capacity where we're paying a higher rate um during the hours that tourists are here. I I think if I was to want to explore increased taxes, we'd maybe be looking at some of our voluntary consumption taxes or other taxes that maybe um aren't going to hit people at necessities, but I've when I, when I told some people that I was running for School Board, they're like, you know what we could do to fund the school, we can raise the cannabis tax. I was like, okay, that's an easy answer, let's let's uh look at consumption or puff taxes to help pay for some of the things we need, but I'm not interested in raising the like property or sales tax rates that um hit at some of our basic expenditures.
Lower the pot tax, raise the Dorito tax, no, I'm just kidding.
Uh yeah, um I I couldn't put it better than Jordan, I I'm I'm not an economist, like I said earlier. Um I I couldn't tell you what the tax, an increase in taxes would do to our economy or to the average uh community household here. Um I I sure uh would say, you know, I'm not gonna necessarily willingly say that uh that I would love uh to pay more money out of my pocket. I'm not gonna say it's not without a question, but I don't think I'm the right person to um say specifically for Borough taxes um to fund the district. I think there's other creative ways, um I I'd still whole- wholeheartedly believe uh that we really need to press a lot of gas on our state legislature this year and our governor, whoever they uh, well, governor's gonna still be the governor, but whoever ends up gonna be in the legislature uh to increase the base unit allocation, because that is where the vast majority of our funds come from and the higher BSA is, the more money that we have to work with. That being said, we need to be more responsible with our money too.
I feel it's been working for us, uh similar to other communities within Alaska where they're raising the taxes during the season to get the tourists to be able to help pay for most of it. I would be open to maybe hiring that a little bit more, but not too much, um just because we really want to get money outside of the community to bring in. But yeah, like I said, I've seen it in other communities where it works and I haven't seen too much scuffle about it, but there's always a open conversation.
Um I think the taxes are about right right now and I'm never in favor of higher taxes. If if there were to be the consideration of higher taxes, that would actually have to be an initiative from the community. If the community comes forth and says, uh we want this in our schools and we are willing to pay for it using this mechanism, well then that's an entirely different conversation. But you've got a lot of diverse entities in the community who question, well, where my education, my taxes that are going towards education, I don't have any kids in the school. Or this or that or the other, no, I'm never in in favor of higher taxes, they they're right where they need to be.
I think it's important that we recognize that the youth are one of our most valuable um valuable people in our community, they're the hope for our future, they're who we're trying to invest in to be able to be future leaders, be future workers, be future fathers and mothers, uh future heads of family and contribute to society. So it is important that we invest and and are careful with how um how we build and grow them and support them. I I believe that our taxes are, for the most part, in in the correct range currently. I'm not, I'm not a fan of raising taxes, I do think that if we are looking um for supporting different aspects of um of our youth's school experience and we feel like that's going to take more money right now, or I believe that our spending authority was forty-nine million um this year, that's a lot of money. So um figuring out how we're using that and using that to the best that we can um that we can uh is an important, important, important function of the School Board and the School District. Um but if we're looking at the the need for additional funding or looking at needing to have additional taxation, I think that we would specifically look first to consumption taxes um and how we could pass that along.
Well, I think that this is a great conversation that needs to be had. Um the Borough for the last few years has maintained flat tax, we haven't increased, it was on the city side. Um and so that is something that we can say is has been pretty great. Um we came out of COVID sitting pretty because the Borough leadership team is fantastic and um through Assembly Policy and Directives has maintained a really conservative budget and has done a a great job of protecting this community and making sure we didn't have to raise taxes or um or go crazy with it. The other, the other mechanism we have here is that six months of the year, seven months now, we have this wave of people who come in and give us this extra influx of sales tax revenue. And so that's fantastic, that helps prevent us from having to increase and increase and increase on local residents. And if we can just stick with the seasonality of that and all things Alaska are, right, like road construction, which is a headache for the summertime, tourism, the masses, that's a headache in the summertime, but it all goes away and then every, all of our resources and everything is replenished.
All right, so Michelle, I know you have to run. So I'm going to close out with a final question for the Assembly. Speaking of the six months out of the year that we have people here, there are initiatives in other communities to limit the number of passengers and cruise ships coming into those respective communities. What are your thoughts on those type of initiatives in Ketchikan?
This is one of my favorite topics, Trevor, thank you. I am, I'm no longer employed by a giant operator in the town, so people can't call me the token tourism person, so, haha. Um I am now a business owner exclusively and that's what I do. And so everything that I I'm doing for my children, it is relying on these people coming in in waves. Do I think that our infrastructure uh can sustain a massive growth? No, I don't think Southeast Alaska can right now either. And so that's why we're seeing this uh initiatives in Juneau, for instance, are saying no ship Saturdays because they think that if the town stands down for a day, that they get to go downtown and shop and do all the things, but in reality, every business is gonna close and give their people days off, so it's the silliest initiative I've ever heard of. Um as a business, I would shut down, my people would go breathe too and enjoy getting outside, go fish, go hike, do their thing, but the stores won't be open. Um it's just not gonna happen. I think you could spread out tourism in a way that is manageable and and in a way that's not going to then have to increase taxes on locals because that's the problem. When people start talking about limiting tourism without considering the other side of it and the unintended consequences that come with it, that if you say, oh, just chop it down to five thousand a day, then it's like, okay, well, that means these taxes are going up on all residents if you wanna sustain the level of services you have today. And so that's why these conversations have to be really carefully considered and we can't just say, stop the ships from coming, because it's a, it's a really fine line there.
Great, thank you.
I know that the Borough, along with the city, along with the city of Saxman, along with the Ketchikan Visitors Bureau, have spent a lot of time on this subject. They've worked on a five-year plan um for the strategy to how to manage tourism. One of the things that they talk about is is cycling the times, making sure that's the, that there's a sustainability of how many people are are in Ketchikan at a time. Um one of the things that we have to be mindful of is transportation. We've seen that a lot this week, uh how how transportation that is already tough with the construction and with the amount of uh additional traffic in the summer is impacted when we now go down to one road. It gets really difficult to manage and it's important to recognize that the the Borough has a huge part in that. We have the busing system for for this island and have done a really good job of being intentional about how we're using the buses, how we're havering, having um transportation that's planned, that's sustainable and the way that it's serving both of our, both our community and then also our visitors. Uh another thing is the environmental impact, right? How how many tourists can we sustain while still maintaining the pristine environment that we all like to live in? And those are important things, something that we could do, I'm not, I'm not for limiting the number of of tourists at this point, I I think that we have capacity at the docks, we have capacity for the ships that are coming in, but I am for managing how those tourists are engaging um in our community, whether that's limiting areas that that can be locals or or limiting how many tourists can be there and the environmental impact that those tourists have. Um whether that's being more intentional with the transportation and and cycling um tourists to different areas of our of our island and maintaining the things that we have and whether that's supporting our infrastructure to make sure that it meets the needs of the tourists that we have, we've got to make sure that we're, we're not just making a place that's good for people to visit for a summer and then we have to live in what's left for the rest of the year, but we've developed a community that's sustainable for everyone that gets to be part of Ketchikan.
Perfect. Thank you so much, just a reminder, our municipal election is Tuesday, October first. We have our uh School Board and Assembly candidates on the ballot and then also this uh in the city of Ketchikan, we have the City Council and City Mayor. So let's give a round of applause to our candidates from the Assembly and the and the School Board.